Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to call the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three Convo meeting and work session to order at two oh four. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Go ahead.
Mr. Wiggentown?
I'll second.
Mr. Family? Is there any discussion? All in favor? I oppose this agenda is approved. Because this is a work session. First area of concentration is strategic plan, goal for communication and engagement. And the first item is presentation on the proposed roundabout at Dragon Drive by the Georgia DOT. I apologize, I haven't met any of you gentlemen yet, but if you would introduce yourself and begin with... I think we'll have some questions, but begin with what information you have.
Alright. Okay, so lots of people are pretty much involved with this today. My name is Chris Raymond. I'm a district traffic engineer. David Ray is the district design engineer. And Gilberto Cruz is a design engineer.
Design engineer.
Yeah, so, yeah, we actually watched last week's meeting. So we kind of know what the questions you had, so hopefully we'll hit some of those to the presentation. Unfortunately, this is all kind of based on the concept report that was presented to you last time. So you might be able to familiar with some of the information we're going to show. But I imagine you all will have some questions for us as well. Grant, one of the... This is best, I apologize for not being able to be here himself. Just a lot of things going on as well, so should be able to manage them. So, yeah, we're going to go over just kind of overview of the safety program that's funding the project. The location, which we don't know about at this point. Some of the crash analysis that led to the decision on what we're trying to do out there. And then go over, then have David take it over, go over the volumes. Actually, I'll go over the volumes, and then you'll go over the current design and some of the design decisions as the project has developed. And then we'll go over some operational analysis as well on, you know, to recover safety and operations on how we expect the roundabout to perform. So, safety program is a federal, we fund a program. I think the state gets a hundred million a year at least to do projects across the states. They're all BC-driven, so cost-benefit driven. And it's a competitive process, basically. So we're trying, they're trying to target the locations across the entire state that have the highest frequency of crashes. And so, and a couple of that with solutions that are fundable, basically. So, you know, if there are a lot of crashes, you can spend more money and justify spending more money in a particular location. So there is a lot of emphasis on value engineering, so doing, you know, the right scope of work for the situation. And we'll get into that, because it does come to effect in the decisions that were made for this roundabout. And, yeah, the improvements are obviously safety-focused, though they're not directly operational-focused. They, I mean, they are considered, we don't like to go into situation and make operational performance worse. And that's the case in this, this is actually expected to have a substantial benefit, especially over the next twenty years. We're not increasing any kind of delays, we'll be improving it substantially, actually. So I won't spend too much time on this, you guys know where it is. Fifty-three Dragon Drive. And some information about what's nearby, the train track on Dragon Drive, about two hundred fifty feet away. This is some of the things that we looked at, looking into the design. And this is a lot smaller than Project Need. But this is the breakdown of the crashes that are at the location. Main thing you want to focus on, you know, there's a lot to talk about, you know, we made improvements to the signal recently, maybe seven, eight months ago at this point. And the main improvement that's going to provide at that location is for those left-turning traffic, obviously, into the school. Which honestly, wasn't really a major... I mean, it was happening, and the crashes do tend to be more severe in those types of situations. But it wasn't the predominant crash pattern that we were seeing out there. The crash pattern by far the most common was the rear-end crash. We had, out of the eighty-three crashes over the last ten years, fifty-six of them were rear-end crashes. And really, the improvements that we made to the signal did not address that at all. And so, you know, we'll talk about how we think the roundabout will improve that and why, just kind of mentality-wise, especially being here at high school, one of those kinds of crashes are occurring in the first place. So, yeah, again, Project Need was based on historical crash data and the safety issues identified. Getting into the traffic volumes. Based on, you know, twenty twenty-two, you know, we're looking at about forty-five hundred vehicles per day on fifty-three business. With about, you know, five hundred per day on Dragon Drive. And obviously, being a, you know, being a school, it's very, I guess, well, PE? That's a word, you know, it's very isolated, especially on Dragon Drive, obviously. The amount of traffic going into the school is very, very finite portions of the day. And that bears out in the hourly, the peak hour of traffic, we call it. With, you know, say, in the morning, four hundred and seventy-five cars going into the school from that direction in the morning. From that protected left, and then a large amount of people turning right out of the school. Which is where the vast majority of the rear-end crashes occurs, is coming out of the school, turning right onto fifty-three business. And then, these are some of the alternatives we analyzed. And I think you heard about that a little bit last week as well. So there are multiple versions of the roundabouts, some with no bypass lanes. Whereas the bypass lanes, really, in the one we're, in the original concept, which I think I can pull up with Needby, but the original concept was very preliminary. And kind of getting back into that focus on value, but the focus on efficient design, and again, realizing that the safety program is BC-driven. And that, you know, so the amount of safety we can provide to a location at the best possible cost is paramount, and making it fundable. And this is going to get, instead of federally funded, but that means, especially roundabouts, roundabouts are a hundred percent funded federally, so it's not no state taxes or local tax dollars, it's a hundred percent federal. But anyways, multiple versions of the roundabout were considered. The green tea, which I know was brought up last time, was also considered. But ultimately, the solution that was sort of upon a concept was the single lane roundabout with the west bypass lane for those vehicles turning right out of the school onto a fifty-three business. David, you like to figure it out from here in the design?
This is just a copy of the layout, and I've got a hard copy, if anybody hasn't seen it recently, if anybody can get that. Here it shows the layout of the roundabout itself. Southbound, two lanes, one of the lanes is designated to turn left into the drag drive. And then there's a westbound, right turn bypass lane heading north also, since that's where most of the turns are coming from. It's about a sixty-fourty split, northbound versus southbound. And that's some of the signs, it doesn't include every sign, but that's most of what we, it'll be signed like crazy. This is an example of one in Carrollton. You know, there were some questions about the landscaping and maybe the sign. This is just a possibility, right now, we have just a standard detail on the plans, it shows some standard low-growth growing plants, shrubs type thing. But this is something that, you know, is possible, used on things that are immovable. I will get to the weeds of the typical sections, if you have any specific questions about any of the widths and lanes or the circle itself, we can definitely talk about that. I have a set of plans also that we can look at. There will be sidewalks around the roundabout itself, outside the roundabout influence area, this is clear standard, we'll show grass. That's just a widening section. Same thing, it shows the, there's a six-foot buffer between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk. At low speed, so shouldn't be too many issues with pedestrians, if there aren't pedestrians at all. This typical section shows the splitter islands. And talking a little bit about right-of-way, I'm not a right-of-way person, I'll look at the sign office, but there are five parcels and no parcels or art displacements. There's some environmentally sensitive areas on the project, and those are laid out, colored drawn with. There are two wetlands, three perennial streams, and three state or federally listed endangered species, and all three of those are bats. This is going over some of the operational analysis, and I've broken it down a little bit here. It's versus the signal versus the roundabout in the current year, which we have is twenty twenty-two now, and the future year, which is twenty years out. And you're getting a decrease in delay, anywhere from thirty-seven to thirty-two percent in the PM, that's in the AM, and then twenty-four hour, I mean, excuse me, twenty-four percent and fifteen percent difference between the current and the future traffic. So the delay will be much shorter. This is the project cost and the schedule. It's like the total right now is, let's turn around, about three point six million, and two point eight of that is construction. Right-of-way is two forty, utilities is thirty thousand, that's for reimbursable utilities, anything that might be inside the right-of-way that we have to get approved. Right now, the project's scheduled to let construction in July of twenty-four, and we expect eighteen months to finish the project. Do you have any questions? Chris?
So, gentlemen, so number one, we, I've had a kid there at school continuously since two thousand seventeen, so I'm very familiar with the intersection. We all know there was a safety issue. And contrary to what you guys say, our greatest concern was that left turn, because that's where the most dangerous things happen. The bumper, the bumper traffic is, I mean, yeah, you'd rather it not happen, but that wasn't where people were getting hurt. So our greatest concern was those left-hand turns. And I guess one of my, I have two big concerns. One of them is, all of that, most of that crash data that originally led to the design was done before that signal was changed. None of us know why nobody ever changed that signal before last year, and we're grateful. GDOT was awesome to work with Mr. Wallace, and we got that changed, and we have had no accidents turning left since then, which is fantastic. And so, one of my concerns is the fact that, you know, and I guess you do have some data here today that, from the last couple of years, or from the last two years versus when this was originally done. So that was one thing, is what was the difference? And then, my bigger concern is, one reason this came to all of us originally, Mr. Wallace, whether you guys know, he was our principal there until two years ago. So he's been part of this process all along. And when we seen the most recent one, which is the one you're proposing now, that did not match what was originally shown to the school a few years ago. And the big difference is, you've taken away that northbound bypass coming up from the south that allows people to turn automatically into the high school and not have to go through the roundabout. And right now, we have that available, and I, for the life of me, can't see how that's not going to present an issue, because, as you noted in your presentation, most of the traffic is coming from the north, which is true. And so, they're going to have a continuous flow through the roundabout, and as soon as we get a car that needs to go straight through from the south, it's going to back all the traffic up to the south, because they have no way to turn directly into the high school. So, it seems to me it's going to create an issue that we don't have right now. And that's a great concern, because over and over, and you presented too, that safety is the main concern here. Mr. Jasper said that. Well, if safety is the main concern, that original roundabout, if we're going to do this, seems like the most safe thing we can do.
Okay, I'll try to address that. I mean, I haven't looked into the details on this, but it does appear that we've, and it's possible this to happen before the protected right turn or protected left turn went in. But we have had three angle crashes in twenty twenty-three.
That was definitely before.
Before, yeah. And the problem, at least, I mean, it is certainly going to have an effect, you're going to have less crashes with that left turn in. But they will not be eliminated. You know, I mean, people do still run red lights. And the reality is, if the ones we are going to have there are going to absolutely be probably more severe than what was happening prior. Because there's an expectation of safety when you're turning left at a left turn, protected left turn, that the person opposing you is going to stop. So, I mean, so you're really not under any kind of notion of caution as you're turning left, and, you know, inevitably when, it will be, it will be substantially fewer than previous, but when it does happen, it will be quite severe, as those cars are coming down to their, at the speed limit, which is... And, so we're going, yeah, the original design? I'm not sure it would have actually, it would have been safer. We were saying, I guess you're getting into the safety, both safety and operations part, I think we're saying. Starting with the safety part. Yes, they would have their own lanes, they wouldn't be getting into the actual roundabouts. But a couple of things as far as safety is concerned, you have to remember that the cars that will be going around the circle, around from this lane, will probably be going about fifteen miles per hour. So anybody entering for this, for this direction will not be really at risk of having a high-speed impact. But they have to slow down if that must negotiate the turn. So I think the data, which I didn't, I guess, probably get into as far as the studies that have been done, don't suggest that that would be any more dangerous than the bypass, which really, I mean, I've got so much on this leg, but the bypass coming down from here onto this road, which, well, I guess it does make you have four-lane sections, so... Yeah, I guess that would be...
You haven't addressed my concern.
Yeah, this is...
Okay.
Let me, let me come over here.
Okay.
So, I just want you to acknowledge this. So, here's what we know, the traffic coming this way, we're going to have more traffic coming this way in the morning. They're going to immediately go into the roundabout, and it's going to be continuous coming from that direction. When there's a car coming from this direction, there's no bypass lane. When we get the first car that needs to go through the intersection, they're going to be stopped here, and they're going to be yielded while all this traffic comes through, which means traffic is going to back up here, even the people needing to turn here, because they got to go into the roundabout. That's my concern.
So you're talking about operational issues, not a safety issue?
Well, this is a safety issue, because now we're going to create bumper-to-bumper issues here, because traffic's backing up and still allowing them to flow through here, so it's a safety now.
Yeah, well, the situation will be that that won't actually occur.
And please tell me why.
Because a single lane roundabout is designed to manage up to twenty-two thousand vehicles per day. So, even though it may appear, and you get these queues currently turning left, because they're all coming, they're all coming and they're collecting, and they're storing up. But the reality is, they're not all coming exactly at the same time. So it won't be, it won't be a continuous flow through a roundabout.
Sir, I want to disagree with you, in the morning, it absolutely is, you haven't been here, and it is a continuous flow during that thirty-minute window, it is continuous.
Okay.
In all due respect, sir, have you been around a roundabout lately?
Yeah, yes.
Because if one is talking about right now, you can't get around that in the morning, you know why? Because of continual traffic.
Okay. Um, I don't know, I mean, I have...
And so, what I would say, you know what, and here's another thing, our community, eighty percent doesn't want this.
Yeah.
Because we're concerned, and I've really got questions about teenage drivers and all navigating a roundabout. I don't know that it's going to make it better. My concern is, it may make it worse, but aside from that, if we're going to get it, I am adamantly opposed if we don't have that bypass lane to get into the high school. I don't see how that can be a great result for us.
Yeah, I don't know if we have the breakdown of the models.
I read it, you do, and here's my concern. I read it had that as an alternate, in the last one you gave Mr. Wallace, it was alternate two.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, our traffic models just don't suggest that there's going to be a, going to be a capacity concern. There's, okay, there are almost half a mile away, we have Cass White High School, which has about one and a half times the students that Pickens does. Has a single lane roundabout with no bypasses at all, and it's not an issue. I'm not necessarily sure, maybe there's other factors at play, but they have similar, I mean, they have more students, and presumably more traffic going into the school, and they don't have, they don't have the second lane, the dedicated left turn lane. They don't have any kind of bypass going on into the school, and they don't have congestion problems. So maybe, maybe there's a difference, I mean, I haven't looked at the traffic apples to apples, but I can say that they do have more students, and they don't have any bypass lane.
Is this, is the one you're talking about, is it directly in front of the school?
Yes, well, it's directly, it's to a road that goes to nothing else but the school.
Mr. Wallace, is this the one that, this is Cass, this is not North Murray?
No, it's on Cass White Road, though, right?
Yes.
Far cry from State Highway fifty-three, as far as traffic.
Cass White Road is very different than Inspector Route fifty-three.
But as far as vehicles going to the high school, I would say that it's not different.
We're talking about all traffic, none of these kids going to the high school.
Well, the traffic coming through this way won't be affecting the traffic going this way.
But the traffic going north will.
Yeah. Okay, what's the, and what's the difference? And so we're talking about, you know, two-twenty in the mornings versus two-twenty-five.
Here's, let me, let me take just another opinion, and it was on the last session that we had. I go to this high school every day, my kid's there, I am a supporter of roundabouts, so let me throw that out there, I love roundabouts. But what they're saying is actually true, I'm coming from town, north, north, coming south. We get in the lane, take a left, the only thing that clears the traffic coming north is our turn light to turn red. Every morning, every morning, there's a backup all the way south, because they're yielding. To, and that's, when that light changes to red, is when the oncoming northbound people can turn into the high school. It's already backed up with the red light. So, my question is, you have all these kids that are coming in, and let's not just throw it off on the kids, they're adults, they can't drive a roundabout, I just want to throw that out there. But my concern is, in not having that lane there, because I don't want any kid coming north to think, well, I've been sitting here after four or five rotations, I'm just going to gun it, and I'm going to try to beat somebody. Because that's what I do in a roundabout, and I'm forty-nine, I mean, I'll admit that, but that's what they're going to do. So, I like the one with the second lane that just goes up into the, into the high school. That's the only, that's what I see every morning.
Okay. If I may?
Yes, please.
I noticed on your spreadsheet that last year, there were ten accidents, and then the red arrow was put in. And then we have four accidents this year, and functionally, our school year is over.
Right.
So I would say that's, it's not real tough. The accident rate has been reduced by sixty percent just with that red arrow, is that not right?
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to determine, based on the crash that has happened since the red light went in, or the protected left went in. We usually give it two or three years of analysis, yeah, and if you want to...
That brings me to another point. I was not a science teacher, but I know enough about science, that if you are conducting an experiment, you go from here to here and draw your conclusions. If you throw in another variable, it throws everything out. What you have done is you're taking data from however many years before, factoring it all in, but the variable changed. Your data from before the red light, to me, is useless. And I am totally opposed to this, if we had more data, I might be agreeable to it, I've learned how to do roundabouts too. Now, Mr. Jasper's comment, when I, you know, we considered safety thing, he said, well, kids have to learn somewhere. Well, I'm sorry, going to school with a thousand other kids is not the place to learn.
Yeah, I mean, I...
And they will exactly jump in.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, maybe, probably. I am still of the opinion, of personal opinion, that this will be a safer intersection. There's only one thing you have to look for at an intersection this high, is you look to the left, if somebody's there, you don't go, if somebody isn't, you do go. There will be, there will be opportunities to turn right into the school. I mean, I obviously trust the models more than you guys do, but, I mean, I do believe in the models that we build that show delay. And the delay just doesn't bear out, there's no evidence to suggest the amount of traffic going to the school will be overly burdensome to this, to this leg.
Well, I understand that you all, we have no say in it anyway, from what I've been told, y'all are going to do whatever you're going to do.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line right there. But I'm, we all, we all want our kids to be safe, so we may come at it different ways.
Publics don't win, period. The publics don't win.
Well, even though it's funded one hundred percent by federal money, well, that's Jim Dandy as far as our local money goes, but I pay federal taxes too, so it's still important to me.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I guess, well, the project procedure on is probably in my control, but, I don't know, I mean, I'm trying to convince you that it will indeed be a safer intersection. It does appear that I'm doing a very good job, but...
I am not doubting, I'm not doubting that it might gain some safety, but, but what you, but what you're doing is work, well, only in the sense that we've got one thou, we got, how many, five hundred sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old drivers flowing through that intersection every day? Which, I don't care where you've been, that's not a normal scenario. That's not a normal traffic scenario. And so, that concerns me. Number two is, I'm completely convinced it's not as safe as it can be without that northbound bypass. I'm completely convinced of that, no matter what you tell me, common sense tells me what I'm saying is right. There's, it's going to back up there, because you're taking away, it already does, and we've got one there, and you're going to take it away. And so, if you're going to do this, please, give us that, if you're going to do this. Because I read the traffic analysis, and Chris, I don't know if you can pull that up or not, the one that's got those alternates? But it said specifically, and this was my concern, and I raised it from Mr. Jasper's, it was cut because of cost, and it was clearly noted in there that option that I want is, has more cost, and it's one of the reasons you chose not to do it.
Yeah.
Is that the report says that?
Yes.
It's a cost, I guess it's a cost-benefit scenario.
I understand that, I'm going to hear about training.
A million or more dollars for that additional construction, I'm just spitballing, I'm guessing it'd be around that.
How much did you say, sir?
A million more.
A million more for one more lane?
Yeah, for, yeah, to add, to buy the additional right-of-way, to do the construction, well, we can serve with a safe five hundred dollars. It would be, it would be enough to suppress the PC, the cost-benefit, to make it a less competitive project. And, I don't know, I mean, it does help that you are going into it, into a, you know, a multi-lane section on either end. Otherwise, I would say it would be a less safe situation, as far as having to merge beyond the roundabout, which wouldn't lead to the case here. But again, I kind of go back to that, just the speed differential we're talking versus what's there now, as far as the vehicles turning left, as they're coming around the roundabout, are going to be going slow, much slower than, you know, than what we're checking out.
After driving it every day?
I mean, you have music in front of you. I mean, once they want, if they want to stay on the road, they'll slow down.
Right.
You would think they would think that now, and they don't. I'm just saying, I see it every day.
It's like saying, well, he knows better than drinking and driving, but why?
Well, I had a conversation with our, with Pickens County Sheriff earlier today about what kind of accidents they were seeing at the roundabout. Well, a lot of them just absent mindedness, and they weren't familiar with the area. In the side, some of them just weren't paying attention, or perhaps that, or something, the drivers just ran right through the middle of them. You would think our kids aren't going to necessarily be doing that during school hours going and coming, you would think. Never underestimate the possibility of something.
Teenage drivers specifically, yeah. You're talking about the rationale.
I, I do understand what everybody's saying, I'm not altogether opposed to roundabouts. I don't particularly like them in my business, talk on a truck, we lose a lot of tires because we're on those curbs.
Yeah, yeah, you brought that up, I just wanted to address that, um, cause it, I, I used to be able to do the roundabout, the safe roundabout program. Um, so I'm quite. But, um, so again, we have, we have been changing to, to the, uh, the detail on the, um, on the type, type of curb used, I mean, currently, there currently should only be a one-inch lip, um, before it goes to a, to a, goes to a forty-five, or a four-to-one, uh, slope. So it really shouldn't be tearing up any, any tires, uh, the way we have it designed, I'd be curious if there were specific locations you, you saw that happening at? Um, if you could look into, not to get sidetracked on.
As long as it's on State Route, roundabout, how strange they're going in and out at that point, there's, it's, it's, there's no way to get around it, especially with a long drive.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, some, I mean, some of the curb you're designing, there's a truck apron that's gonna be run over by the, 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 um, the cow, or the, uh, the trailer. The back wheels, the back wheels are supposed to go over, it's, it's designed for trucks to go over without allowing cars to go, go more quickly around the roundabout. So, and, and the, and the curb is designed to not, I mean, to be driven on, to not, uh, to not miss a, uh, truck tires. There have, there are some instances where there were on curbs used that I would like to thank Arnold State Rounds, but it's not. So, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Just, just one more thing for me, then I'll hush. I'm a mother, first and foremost, before I'm a board member, taxpayer, voter, all that. Cutting the cost on that, if there is no child over there, I would take half a million dollars for it. That's just what, I mean, that's just the way I look at it.
Well, what I would say is there is.
Or, or teachers, or administrators, or bus drivers, or anybody else, but students first and foremost.
And, and, and I guess I would just have to say that I'm of the opinion that the, that this gonna work would not, would the, the, the change from what was shown prior to what's shown now will, will not have, um, again, I can't guarantee, but, but I guess in either situation, something, something might happen, even if the bypass was there.
Sure.
But, um, there's nothing to suggest that there would be any more, um, in, in, any higher, any more high-speed crashes uh, in the current layout versus the old layout, and, and I know y'all have concerns.
Well, can you tell me that why it was built that, or it was drawn that way to begin with?
Probably.
Does that make sense? I mean, if it really wasn't going to make that big of a difference, why would we?
Yeah, I, I'm actually doing a little sketch, um, cause we really, yeah, we're trying not to overpromise and deliver. Um, probably just because it's going to a multi-lane section on, on, on either of those lanes. Um, so, you know, I guess in some minds, it makes sense just to carry both lanes around.
Right.
Um, but, I mean, but, I mean, I mean, yeah, you are, you are, you wouldn't be separating them the way they're showing it, but, um, typically more lanes leads to more, more conflicts.
And I understand that, and I understand where you're coming from, and it's also interesting to me that we, I like consistency. So we're gonna have two, we're gonna have a bypass lane going south, but not one going north, is what you're saying, correct?
Uh, the bypass lane is the, is coming out of driving drive to the right turning traffic.
Okay, but there's.
On bypass.
Southbound.
We're gonna have two instead of three.
Okay, all right, good. Clarification, thank you.
So, Mr. Wallace actually brought it up, what I read, this is the alter, alternate, turn it to two is the one that was originally proposed, and it notes here, um, however, this, let's see, the FHW crash reduction factors for this alternative are the same as those for the preferred alternative. Property damage only crashes are expected to be reduced by forty-eight percent, and fatality and injury crashes by sixty percent. However, this specific lane configuration impacts both the operation of the intersection as well as the anticipated construction cross, and that's the one that bothers me. It should be noted that the lane configuration detailed in this alternative is the recommended lane configuration of the preferred alternative when the interim year, now, here's, I don't know what all this means. Interim year two thousand thirty-two was analyzed operationally. In this scenario, the interim year two thousand thirty-two lane configuration would be built and opened in two oh two-three. And it's, while this configuration operates successfully, the benefit cost ratio is three point seven nine. So, wha- what is this interim year, what, what does that mean?
Um, well, we're studying roundabouts, they tend to, um, break up the, the operational analysis, uh, in, in more segments, usually we, we just kind of, we just do a, an open year and a design year. But for roundabouts, they do an interim, um, year, so halfway through the design line, they split the design line, which our project is twenty years. So in this case, with the, with the expectation it was gonna open in two thousand twenty-two, then they did an analysis on what the operations would be in two thousand thirty-two, uh, as well as two thousand, uh, two thousand forty-two. But it's all with the interim, yeah, and, I don't know, I, I,
Okay.
Look at where, you know, what, what the, what the differential was, um, on the operations of those two dates. It should be in a different section of the, of the concept.
Well, I mean, my, my final comment is that, I mean, it looks like we, it, it looks like we may not have a choice in the matter, which I think is sad, if you don't take our input, and we live here, and we are responsible for students, um, that if you're gonna do this, you at least go back and give us the more robust version. And so, I, and, and we're gonna, we'll, I, I, I'll tell you this, we're gonna make all of our people in the community aware of that, if the state doesn't do that for us. I will, because I don't think you're giving us the safest version that we can have, which I think is not good.
Um.
And, and please understand, I, this is not you personally, I get it, you've been sent up here, and you're having to take all this, and I get that, okay? But, but you're who they sent for us to voice our concerns to, so there they are.
And what I would say is that, um, what we are proposing is the safest alternative that we can deliver. There is always a safer option, um, and I'm sure there are other things that we could add on to make it that much safer. Um, but with the type of program it is, uh, it will be safer than what's there now, and, and it is deliverable the way it is. Um, there, there, you know, there's always an nth degree further you could take things at, you know, at, at, you know, and, 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 you know, at additional cost. So, I would say that this is, this is safer, this is something we can deliver, um, what we're proposing, and, and what we are delivering will be safer than what is there now.
Based on data collected before we change the signal.
Right.
Based on, based on
Yeah.
natural studies, um, that, that roundabouts are safer than signals, regardless of the configuration.
But keeping in mind that the data you, or you basing this on was before the red, the red light was put in.
Yeah, no, I would say it won't be as dramatic of a safety improvement as before, um, but it will be a safety improvement. And it will be an operational improvement.
Can I ask a question just about normal procedure, cause I, I just, you know, y'all were very helpful in, um, getting the, the signal. That was, that was really helpful, and we really appreciate that, Mike Govis has been awesome, deal with on that. Um, but it, would it, is it a normal practice when you're looking at that, especially when there were multiple designs considered here? I'm not engineer, don't work for DOT, but I can tell you, common sense is gonna tell us all that it was much cheaper to put a signal in, and it obviously happened much quick, more quickly, and you guys were, were kind enough to, to throw that out, because we did transport multiple kids in three different accidents, two thousand twenty-three, it was first week of January, second week of January, third week of January, I was at every one of them, saw every kid getting in, okay? So I've been there, seen it, seen it for the last seven years. But you guys, would it, I mean, would you ever consider doing that before, like, I would like to have seen that done, you know, this first talked about two thousand fifteen, and the former administration for this county government was the one who, who was come to first about this. So that was originally discussed then, we're, we're eight years removed from that. I would love to have seen that data, that done six years ago, seven years ago, um, and I asked for it as a high school principal, by the way. And then we would have five or six years of that data to collect right now, and we would have much more of a valid argument. The problem is, nobody brought this design to us to give us a chance to have a concern with it. I don't know that that was done intentionally, I'm not blaming anybody, just saying, I think it'd be more palatable to the, the district if the first time this was seen was not when y'all made a sign purchase for the right of way down there on the hood of a car, on the state car, the first time I'd ever seen it. And I called a timeout and was like, hey, this is not what we were expecting, so that was the first time that we had seen it, and that's kind of how this got going, so, um, again, it just kind of seems like, wow, we could have, I mean, if we were sitting here five years or six years of data with no crashes there, this is a lot more hefty of an argument, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, I agree, and if, if me and Mike, uh, would have been where we are, then, um, we would have pursued that.
Understand, understand, I totally get it.
And, yeah, apologize if that didn't go sooner, because, yeah, it did make a lot of sense, um, you know, move forward with it.
Yes, sir. But we can't go back, and I understand, I'm not asking for that, I'm just saying like that would
Yeah, and in some respects, we, because, I mean, we are past concept, right? We're, we're in design, we're well in design. Um, and so, yeah, it certainly is unfortunate that, uh, nobody from this, this group was, was invited to the, to the times of team meeting. Um, I'm sure we had locals, like, from the county there, um, in the city, um, or at least the county.
There was a public, public information open house back in twenty-two.
It was done virtually, and, um, yeah, all the results are public on there, and it was majority of the people that didn't approve it then.
Right.
But there, I've done my, listen, I've, I've, I've got this, but here's a problem too, there's a local implication tax-wise as well. There's local government, the county government, all of us taxpayers, responsible for the lighting, responsible for the upkeep of the landscaping around there, and the utility is not reimbursable to them, that's, uh, power and, um, internet and cable, all right? So the county water is not, it was estimated fifty-five thousand dollars in two thousand eighteen to remove that, I dare say that's gonna be more than that now, probably close to double, so there are implications, now, the county government has to accept that because that was agreed upon back under a former administration, so I know they'll just have to do it, but the public's already down on this, if they knew that, that's probably, you know, what I mean, that's, that's something else, it's just gonna be more fuel to that fire, so, I mean.
And, and I'm not discouraging you all from, um, you know, putting that on, on paper, and, and that can be given to the project manager, and, um, and I don't want to pass the buck, it's not my call on whether or not this project moves forward, I would, um, I, you know, I think, you know, I think it will be a, a safer solution, but I know there's a lot of other factors at play.
For you guys, has, has something like this, if we were to just ask, I know, I mean, me, it's gone eight years, what's another couple? If we were able to collect data for another couple and revisit this, is that something that can even be a possibility? I'm just asking, I mean, is that something that could be done, are we too far removed for that, or you can't answer that?
Um, I'm not sure this happened, um, I'm, I'm sure
I get you.
It's possible, um, but, you know, we, we haven't gone, we haven't, you know, the project hasn't been let yet.
Understand.
So there certainly is a tap, I don't know if that's a viable one that, that the department.
Just an idea, I mean, because it could buy us some time to collect some more data on this red light and.
So, so what is the, if, if we wanted to ask for some time or delay this, what is the process we would need to do?
Uh, I'm not sure exactly what all, um, I know at, at minimum, I could, you know, you could write a, a letter to, uh, to Grant or myself, um, you know,
Okay.
You know, stating your concerns, and that would be passed on to the project manager, and, um, not sure where it goes from there. Honestly, as far as, I mean, it's, it's their project, their call, um, and, um, I want to say that, that in this moment, Grant, uh, and again, and I, you know, we do feel it provides a safety improvement to, to the school. Uh, so currently, my recommendation would be to proceed with the project, um, but certainly in their, you know, at, at minimum, I mean, that, that is something that, that you could do, and that would pass along to the project manager, um, I'm not so sure what effect it would have.
Mr. Wallace, can we go back to the roundabout design, please, on the vehicle?
Sure. You want the current, or you want the original?
The current.
That's right.
Yeah, one, we are all elected officials, and we represent the community. Another concern that I have, and I know the property hasn't been secured, and apparently there's litigation pending, but at some point, if there's any development, shouldn't there be a four-way design right there for a roundabout? Because there's absolutely no access to, I guess that would be the west side of the roundabout. I, it's just my understanding that, that's one of the holdups with securing the property that's gonna lead to litigation.
Right.
Yeah, and if there, if, if at some point that's developed, and there's a need for it, what would happen there?
Um, it would just be incorporated into the, into the roundabout.
What, but I'm talking about if after the fact. I mean, it'd have to come back and, how much redoing would need to be done there, I'm not an engineer, Mr. Wallace is, y'all are, I am not.
I mean, uh, maybe after the fact, if anybody wanted to dump that property on, on that side of the road, uh, they would pay for the changes. And, and, you know, it, it is, it's possible, and it's, it's nothing for including it from, from, from being integrated into the roundabout after the fact. Um, but it would, it would be at developer's cost, unless it's a road, you know, that would be locals or whoever built the roads, uh, responsibility to pay for.
I appreciate the information.
You mentioned earlier about, you know, what, what we could do as a board of education, but like, if, would you recommend that route also to, to lobby for a design change in the roundabout? Or, or are we too far past that right now? I mean, is this what we're, if, if this project were to occur, that's what we would see?
Yeah, I think, um, at this point, it would, it would be a substantial cost to the department to, to go back and redesign it. Like I said, you know, the, the previous design was very preliminary, um, and, uh, and there would be substantial redesign uh, costs to, to, to revert back to the, to the previous layout. But I, I, but as far as like, you know, pursuing that, I mean, I suppose the, the, yeah, same, you know, uh, written request would be how to, you know, how to get started, and again, same process, you know, from the district, and then we would pass it on to, uh, the, um, to the project manager.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
In the, in this, this is more of a, a hearing than anything, I'd like to offer the opportunity to one of the property owners around there, if he would like to say anything, in regards to this new project.
Uh, I think I might just take his, uh, you know, Chris's, uh, suggestion and write, uh, Grant a letter. Express, I mean, I have the exact same concerns that y'all have, and it seems to me that if, something, if we do it, that we should do, do it correctly. There is gonna be a development across the street at some point, and I feel like it's kind of turned us back on, on that side of the highways. Shaped like a D instead of a circle, and I heard him say the developer will pay it all, which doesn't really seem fair at this point, to come back in, rip it up, change it, and, uh, so I think, I don't, I don't think I'd like to have anything else to add, other than, pretty much everybody said.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is anybody else? Mr. Reiman and Company, thank you for joining us today, and, and it gives us a lot more information and perhaps directions that we can go.
And again, you know, Wallace is available for you guys at any time, I can bring any cards with me, but if you have any additional questions, uh, please feel free to reach out.
I'd be.
Well, he does. Even better, reach out to him.
I never get to hand out cards.
Thank you so much, so are you gonna be the
Our office is overseeing the science project.
You're gonna be the point man next time around, huh?
Thank you. Excellent. Get it flipped over. Are we excused?
I don't like you walking around in your order, I'm sure you're ready to go.
Unless you want input on our school calendar for next year.
You get too many days off.
My kids. I'm in Gordon, so I don't want.
Thank you.
I think, well, let's take a quick break right now, maybe five minutes. Okay, we are back, and the next item of a work session is the proposal on the school calendar, Mark, do you?
I don't, I do not have it attached because it's not approved, so y'all have it on the folder.
I have that in one of my many folders. I have that in one of my many folders here. They're all green, that's the problem.
Although, we make the reservations.
That is awesome.
It's always important that we get a calendar settled before the first year. Because I remember for many years, at a former employer, we had to pick a whole year's worth of vacation at the beginning of the year. So...
Can I, Mr. Gratchell, can I?
Yeah, why don't you run us through it?
What I'd like to say is that, that we have, when we were doing our listing tours at the end of October through the first part, or the end of, or mid-November, one of the questions we asked all of our schools and our employees was, let's talk about the calendar. And so we got our input from our teachers and our other employees in those listing tours. And what, what you see in front of you, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year calendar, it's really similar to what we have right now. Okay? I do want to point out a couple of, a couple of things. You know, we'll start on August the first, like we did this year. We'll have a staggered start. And then I do want to call your attention to what you see in purple. In purple, those are our virtual days that we had scheduled. Of course, the Friday before Labor Day is Jeep Fest, and so we have a virtual day that day. We also have a virtual day on Election Day, because we are anticipating heavy voter turnout with our schools that are pre-precincts in November of twenty-four. And then, one of the things that we heard pervasively throughout the listing tours, especially from our elementary folks, was the need to get back to having some parent conferences. And, and so we baked in a couple of days. One is for next year is October the eleventh. And then the other one is March the fourteenth. So on those four days, we will, those will be virtual days for our students. If you notice, our fall break remains the same. The fall break is that third weekend, September. That is consistent with Cherokee's. I think a lot of people, at least at the start of our listing tours, liked that. And I'm going to, I'll hit it here in a little bit, talk about the following year's calendar. So, so again, this is, this is very similar to what we're, what we're doing right now this year. You know, next year, Christmas is, it falls on a, on a Wednesday, so we will get out for Christmas break on the Friday before, which I think our teachers are really grateful for. We heard that quite a bit in our listing tours too. But, so again, I don't think there's a lot of changes, honestly, with what we're currently doing this year compared to next year. But this is, this is really what I'd like to propose for us to add this to our consent agenda on Thursday night. But before I, before I do that, any questions about what you see for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar?
Looks good.
Well, one thing I failed to mention, our bus drivers are paid one hundred eighty days. And talking to Mr. Wallace and Mr. Harris, even though our kids physically are in school one hundred and seventy-six days, they can, they can have in-service days for our bus drivers, okay? So we can still pay them the one hundred eighty days. There's plenty of opportunities for us to have in-service for our bus drivers to where they don't reduce their pay at all. So again, my, sorry, quick.
And we do, we do have a certain number of other days where it allowed if we have a hard win.
So again, my proposal is for us to, I propose we add this to our consent agenda on Thursday night, twenty-four, twenty-five. And if it, if it's approved, then we can publish it on Friday.
I'm all for it.
Alright, so I do want to call your attention to the next one, because I'd like to go ahead and begin to start and adopt calendars two years at a time. I think families like this, okay? So this is a little different. This is a little different, and I do want to call your attention to the fall break, okay? Because as we got later in our listing tours, there was a pervasive theme of, you know, move back fall break a little bit, okay? So next year's calendar, we didn't change, but for the twenty-five and twenty-six calendar, fall break is the week of Columbus Day, okay, is our proposal. That is, typically a lot of systems have it then, okay? And it also does not interfere with our marble festival, which is always the first week, first weekend in October. So that is the biggest change with this particular calendar, was moving our fall break from September to October, and it will be the week of Columbus Day, okay? You'll notice we still continue to have a virtual day with Jeep Fest, that's the Friday before Labor Day. And then we'll have parent conferences. Instead of October, we'll have it on the twenty-sixth of September for the fall, and then as well as March thirteenth in the, in the spring, okay? So we'll keep, keep the idea of having parent conferences twice, once first semester and once second semester, having those virtual days for our kids, okay? Let's see, anything else I'd like to draw to your attention? I, I do want to mention this, and just to be very transparent. Yeah, this is, this calendar is one hundred and seventy-nine student days, okay? And honestly, it's just, I mean, we can, I'd like to have one hundred eighty days for kids to go to school every, every year. It just, this particular year, I mean, we don't want to start school before August the first. That's, that's kind of a bad, the bad optics if we do that. So August the first is on Friday, twenty-two, twenty-three. So there would be one hundred and seventy-nine days of school for kids. The teachers would still work one hundred and ninety with this calendar, okay? But again, that's, that's the biggest difference. I want to make, make sure we're clear on that. That's just, it's just when, you know, we don't need to start first day of school before August the first. I think, you know, I think that's, our teacher's pretty adamant about that with what we heard. But it is, and I don't anticipate this being a yearly thing. It just kind of depends on when August first falls, to be honest with you, and when the world day falls, okay? And again, this is, this is, the, the fall break will be later in the fall, would be the week of October the thirteenth. That's Columbus Day, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six, are we still doing a staggered start on that?
That's, that's a great question, and I didn't put anything on there, just because I haven't, I'd like to, but again, that's a... What I worry about is that if we do a staggered start on Friday, is when nobody show up, honestly. So, we may have to get away from that one year.
It's a fair point.
Yeah. I mean, I did hear the staggered start came through in our listing tours. I mean, I think for the most part, our folks like that. I think, yes, if those students new to the building acclimated without anybody there. But I do think that it's an issue if it's on a Friday, you know, so that may, we may not have a staggered start in fall twenty-five. It may go back to having it in fall twenty-six. But my recommendation, I'd like, I'd like to propose that we add this into our consent agenda on Thursday night. And again, this kind of gives our families, I think they'll like having the calendar this much in advance, and we can start having two-year adoption, looking at calendars every two years of every one year. Any questions for me?
Or we could look at every year and just go one year ahead.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, this looks good.
Okay, alright. Okay. At this time, if, continuing with our agenda, I'd like to call up our transportation director, Mr. Todd Harris. Last time we met in November, we had some discussion about the traversa system and where we are with routing. And so Mr. Harris is going to go and give us an update on where we are with those things. So Mr. Harris, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Board members, chair, superintendent, I appreciate the opportunity to give you some feedback on our previous conversation about our route developments and the changes we're making in the transportation department. Just to kind of recap what we talked about initially. We are moving from one software platform to another, and same vendor, but software platform. As we started this process when we got here in July, we discovered a couple of anomalies that we discussed in our previous meeting. One was students and student information had been entered into the routing system manually. We had the challenge of, we had a lot of students in our system that weren't in the actual student information system. Had either left the district, graduated, things like that. So we were, at that point in time, when we talked, we were faced with some challenges on identifying those. So, but I just want to give you some feedback, let you know we've been pretty successful with that. We were able to do that without too much trouble, but we kind of pulled information from what we had, and then pulled student information from our infinite campus student information system. Excuse me, compared those, filed all that information in one, filtered it out, did an import, and the students that drivers didn't actually take off, we were able to get rid of that extra thousand, eleven hundred that we were talking about previously. So, that was good. So now, we, currently where we are, we are building routes in the new system as they currently are, okay? So we have developed about thirty-five or thirty-six, got about maybe a little less than twenty to go. I anticipate we'll have those by the end of the week. Then we'll have all the routes in the new system as they sit. That is, seems like an extra word, but at the end of the day, as we progress to start making our routes more efficient, our operation more efficient, kind of need to be able to see where they're sitting, where the overlaps are, where the students are. We got one challenge left, and it's, we talked about it in our previous meeting, was in the past, they had, during registration processes, they had simply told, or informed transportation that a student, you know, Dr. Travis Thomas, needs transportation services. They didn't identify whether, whether that student needed AM, PM, or both. Which gives, is a challenge for us, is we want to make these routes most efficient. We need that information. So right now, we still, we have students who ride primarily AM all the time, primarily PM. And we have tried to disseminate that information through drivers, but I'm pretty confident that after the first, you know, when we get back in January, I've got a, an in-house process that we can get links to parents and capture that information in a soft registration process. I think, I thought we might avoid that, but I think we're going to have to do it, just to identify, to make sure. Is, we've got all the routes built in the system, now we're going to start tweaking and moving, and making them as efficient as possible. Before we do that, we want to make sure we're looking at, we know what students ride and when. It's been a challenge getting the, what students first. Now we want to just get their daily need. And I may have some ideas to tackle that problem beforehand, but I think we're probably going to have to push something out to parents. But it's an import that even if we get, if we're seventy-five or eighty percent effective on that, I think it'll be, it will, it will help us tremendously. So after first of the year, right when we get back, we'll start sculpting those routes. And hopefully, we can eliminate our need for additional bus drivers, additional vehicles, as we discussed, a lot of the ride time for students. But where we are right now is, we have purged the sandbags, we're working on the daily need, and we have got about seventy-five, eighty percent of the routes built in the system now. Should have the rest undone by the end of the year. So we're progressing pretty good. We're waiting to see, that information on who needs what and we need is key, to make sure that those routes are effective and efficient as possible. But that's where we are. I just wanted to appreciate the opportunity to give you all some feedback. You got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Harris, I don't think the public has as much information on this as we do.
Yes, sir.
And we've been very excited when you spoke with us in the past about the capabilities of information that parents have access to, once this whole system is completely formed and online. And could you share a little bit of that?
We can. And, and it's probably the best thing to do, for parents to have that information, is kind of give a comparison to what we have now, or don't have now, capabilities and what we will have. Currently, you know, if a parent wants to know, sign up for a bus, they have to call transportation. If they want to find out what bus they're riding, call transportation. And they, and they will generally start with a school or a teacher. And then they'll tell them to call us, and then they'll call us, and we'll give it to them. And because of the lack of accuracy on student information that we encountered, I encountered out of the gate, some of that information that we were giving them wasn't completely accurate. You know, it could be ten or fifteen minutes off, because we were looking at hundreds of students that weren't actually riding. So it's kind of, they get the information, and then they kind of field it out and find out when the bus is actually coming. When this happens, and we make the full transition, parents, schools, administrators, they will have, schoolroom, classroom teachers, they'll have that information at their fingertips. They can use a student ID, and then it'll show them their household, and it'll show each student's AM bus, AM time, AM stop. If there's any changes in that, it updates live, which is, which is a really huge benefit for special needs parents. Because they have a, those routes change. Students are moved, they change addresses, and because it's a county-wide program, it affects, you know, who used to be second and third, and maybe fourth and fifth, you know, as the route changes. And, but, they can see that live, and they can see accurate information without even having to pick up the telephone. They have a, will have a MyBus360, which will allow parents to, once those routes are being accurately performed every day and the stop times are consistent, that they can go to a laptop, device, phone, they can actually pull up their bus. And this will come when the tablets are installed, and we're working on an installation date now, the GPS, I should say. But they'll be able to see their bus. It'll tell them that their stop time is three oh five. If it's running a little, few minutes early or a couple of minutes late, they'll have ETA three oh seven. You can actually see it on that, which is another huge benefit for special needs parents. And especially some of those who are in more rural areas, to make sure they have time to get to the stop. Intimate weather, they're not standing out there for, you know, five or six minutes. It's a huge piece for parents. And in the communication software that we have currently installed, all that student data will be downloaded, and if there is a delay in a route for, you know, a mechanical problem, or a delay at the school, or whatever it may be, we can send those parents information in real time, so that everybody on the bus can get a message and say, you know, you, you know, bus one twenty-one. Today will be bus one forty. And if you think about how we can send those messages out prior to the operation beginning, how valuable that is to school administrators. Because those buses arrive at the ramp, they're looking for one twenty-one, and if it's in the shop, now they're out there trying to figure out, they got a group of kids and where they go, so...
And this is good for teachers as well.
Absolutely.
It's easy interruption, because the last class the day...
That's right.
The teacher needs to know to tell little Johnny, you know, you're going to be on bus such and such, so he doesn't, he's not wandering around and wondering, wanting to know what's going on.
That's correct. And the navigation devices that we're bringing in, how that will benefit our stakeholders, especially parents is, it gives, anytime you have absentee or substitute drivers that are covering routes. I mean, the old, currently right now, what most drivers do in most counties are they, they got a route sheet or flashlight. And it's kind of telling them where to turn left and right. And obviously, they get dilly. I mean, they run behind because they're, you know, a little bit cautious when they go up certain areas. These navigation devices walk them through routes, tell them what students should be where, get their heads up before they arrive and stop. It'll make those, even, even on routes that are being covered by substitute drivers, it'll make those times more accurate and a lot more predictable. So the resources that we're giving our parents and our students will be, it's a game changer for them. Because right now, they're, in the past, they've had to go, they've had to go actively look for that information. And it can be frustrating at first, too. It can really be, and you have two, three thousand people coming in the first week, you know? And so it's, it's a little bit different when you can put somebody's actual route times, bus numbers, schedules and all that in their hands a week before school starts. So, and I hopefully, and what my ultimate goal would be, to see would be, when parents start, you know, this is a lot more predictable, I know exactly when the bus is coming, that we can see, we can increase our ridership maybe, and produce some of our carpool lines and things like that, get a few more kids on the bus. Because ultimately, that bus is the safest way for those kids to get to the first school. It just is. And it's, resources there, we're going to fill up some more of those seats. So, but I think once parents, and hopefully, you know, as we go through the end of the year, we're transitioning in the new system, the first of the year, it'll be on that. Yep?
Any questions?
Do you have any questions, Mr. Harris? Yep. Do y'all need me, Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward on our agenda, the next thing on our agenda is just a discussion on immunization compliance. Just a little bit about this. I would like to start by saying thank you to our school nurses. They've really worked hard in getting our, our people to be immunized. And we also like to thank the Department of Public Health. You know, they actually held an immunization session at both the high school and PJ right after Thanksgiving, to help get our students immunized. At this time, right now, we have a little bit over fifty students from the high school only who are still un-immunized. And so our nurses are continuing to call these parents. You know, by law, at some point, we're not supposed to let them attend school, you know? But in, in talk of other districts, other districts do actually, after a certain point in time, withdraw, you know? So that, they may come to that in some cases, because the only exemption is a religious exemption, okay? I just want to kind of give you an update on that. It's been something that our nurses have worked hard for. I do appreciate the Department of Public Health offering those immunization clinics, both PJ and the high school right after Thanksgiving. Just want to kind of give you an update of where we are.
Yes, it's clear. So of those fifty, I assume those are people, they've not applied for any kind of religious exemption. It's just not been done. So, of those fifty, I assume those are people, they've not applied for any kind of religious exemption, it's just not been done?
Yeah, I think that our nurses are doing a good job working with that, they, I mean, I think in a lot of cases, they're, they're trying to gather that information. In some cases, they're, they move from out of state, you know, trying to get that information from the other state, but it's, uh, they have put a lot of work in, they're getting this, getting this up to speed and make sure all of our folks are compliant, you know?
I assume we have to do this every year, is this a yearly thing, I would think?
Yes.
Yep.
It is.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. All right, next on our agenda, uh, we do have the budget amendment for our session on Thursday night. So at this time, I'll turn it over to our chief financial officer, thank you, Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Well, let me add, yes, thank you.
The amendment, amendment we're running to you, um, this Thursday night has a multitude of requests in it, so I'm gonna go over a few of them. On your top sheet, this is the page I think you're familiar with, this is the budget, one-page budget summary that, uh, you approved. Any area that had a change in it is in bold italics. So I'm gonna look at general fund first. We made changes to instruction, general admin, school admin, M and O, transportation, and support services central and transfer, transfers out. Instruction, that's where we, the only real place we have money to pull from. So I go in there and look around and see what I can, um, pull out of there, typically it's unspent benefit funds, and that's actually what I want after this time. All total, we'll, we are going to move a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars to other areas. Those areas include, um, general admin, M and O, and transportation for positions that are being added, as y'all are aware, I think one was approved last month, then one will be approved this month. In twenty-four hundred, we are adding funds, uh, for the supplements that were approved at the November meeting last month. In twenty-eight hundred, we're actually, we're moving one position from twenty-eight hundred to twenty-three hundred, so we're able to reduce the funds we need in that position and help pay for the funds in the, in the twenty-three hundred. And then the transfer is actually a transferred fund one fifty, so you're gonna see the transfer and the revenue and the one fifty match. What that is, is we have increased that, remember back at the beginning of the year, when we did, uh, the mileage rate, we had a little bit of extra money that we had not really slated for anything at that time. And I said, we will need, you know, textbooks and things we need over one fifty. This is the amendment to address that. So it's textbooks for PJHS, and then we had two staff development issues that were around twelve thousand, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars that went to Tate and Harmony Elementary. So we have to do some, um, calculating to fit that in. So you're not gonna see it exactly matching those categories, but there's a transfer system there, but it is moving those funds into fund one fifty. Let's see, um, do y'all have questions about general fund or fund one fifty? Now, special revenue, if you'll look at your page two, we have a summary of our special revenue funds. Again, the ones in italics are the ones that had changes. So you have a multitude of grants that had changes. Within, uh, the Title I program, and it's not just program code seventeen fifty, I apologize, it is seventeen seventy, we have some residual FY twenty-three, um, monies that were allowed to be spent up until September thirtieth. So since that happened, we have about five grants that had residual money, I have to budget. We did spend it, it was within the federal, um, regulations and within the federal time period, but I still actually have to budget that money. We were hoping to have it spent last year, but, you know, we may have had some invoices or something that did not come in in time. So this is to address those. All the detail for all of the grants I'm asking for changes on are behind, it's pa, several pages, I think it's about nine pages of detail. But, um, this is updating the Title I program to the current balance. We do estimates when we come into this year, now we have the actual first initial allotment, there will still be carryover money coming. But we were getting so late in the year, I wanted to go and get up what we call trued up to the correct grant totals. But there is carryover money coming. When it comes to carryover, what typically happens, everybody in the state of Georgia has to have their previous year closed out for that grant, everybody. And so you're running about a hundred and eighty entities that have to do this. We don't get carryover in most cer, situations until everyone's done. That's true for, um, the CARES, ESER, ARC funds, too. So we have a lot of really small grants, you're gonna see some little B grants, uh, four thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. All of that detail is in here, but this, what we're trying to do is get everything trued up to this moment. Vocational had some, uh, carryover funds that, um, I was gonna bring all of their grants this time, all of their grants next time. So I will bring them probably in January as long as they're approved. I know Special Ed will have a carryover, even though I brought them this time, I just really, it's a large grant, I really want to get trued up to, and there are quite a few ARC pieces now to that grant. Title I, two, and four are our typical grants before the CARES, ESER era. Um, we, all of those are up to date, um, but like I said, Title I will have a carryover. Vocational, like I said, over next time, homeless grant, we weren't ready to, we don't have the amendment approved. It is a carryover grant from twenty-two, no, twenty-three. I have grants for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, so we're having a lot of fun with this right now. But homeless is, uh, there are two grants, there's one and two, they're from twenty-three. We are in the process of doing amendments to both sides, so I'm just gonna wait and bring the whole thing next time. We're still compliant with our, our expenditures right now. But do y'all have questions on that? We did not change school food, we did not change right from the start, GLRS, um, homeless. I think those are the only ones we didn't touch this time, in Perkins. Do y'all have questions? Lots and lots of detail. That is actually, what you get, what I give you is actually the description that is approved in the Georgia Department of Education Consolidated application that we're required to complete. They actually go through our verbiage, if they don't like the verbiage we use, if they don't like the item, the coding, whatever, they can kick it back to us. We have to make revisions and resubmit. And it's a three-prong approval, so by the time I get an approval, we're pretty good to go. But all of that is from that website, so these are approved items as they are stated. Any questions? I'll probably be back next month with a few more. We'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So at this time, continuing our agenda, I do want to call your attention to the other two pieces of paper in your packet. There is a draft preliminary board meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-four. And this is continuing to have our board meetings on the second Thursday of each month with our call board meeting at five PM, and then followed by the regular board meeting at six PM. And so these are the dates of those second Thursdays. Any questions about that, or are we, can I, I'd like to pose this, that we add this to our consent agenda for Thursday night, okay? And then the second piece, the last piece of paper you have, um, and there is also, uh, kind of our preliminary board work session schedules for twenty-twenty-four. One of the things we talked about in the fall was having our work sessions the Friday before the Thursday called board meetings. And so this, what you see here is, is that on paper, the exception are two, are two months. Uh, April, the, uh, the first Friday is during the spring break, and so we won't meet at that time. And so, uh, April the eighth is actually the Monday before the Thursday call meeting. And the other month, I'd like to call that attention, our attention to is July. Uh, July fifth is the first Friday in July, and so we would not meet on the fifth. The work session will be that Monday, July the eighth, before the Thursday board meeting. So I'd like to, any, any questions about our work sessions? Again, this is kind of, uh, just wanted to set these up and schedule them for twenty-twenty-four.
These work sessions, I may have a little issue with some of the time in, uh, and I won't know until I look at my work.
Okay.
Okay, I will do.
We technically don't have to schedule work sessions if we don't want to, but this gives us a framework. Might just go by, they, they, they regular monthly board meetings, we are obligated to schedule those three years in advance.
Well, that's good, if we can put them out at a year in advance and, and work from that if we need to change something.
Yeah, if we need to modify, then we can kind of work that out.
Okay, okay, all right.
But, but the reg, the regular monthly board meetings are scheduled. We, we might just use this as a template instead of putting this out as.
Okay, so we'll add the, we'll add the regular scheduled board meetings to the consent agenda, we want to add the work sessions to the consent agenda.
Everybody take note of this, we'll use.
I'm gonna use those dates for, for now, for the work session.
As a template for, by for now, and, and on a month-by-month basis, we can, we can adjust.
Right, I'm intent.
Okay, good suggestion, okay? All right, thank you, then, the next thing on our agenda, uh, Ms. Thompson and, uh, Beth Thompson's here, our nutrition director, and we've been continuing to meet and discuss our lunch program, um, specifically about some of the debts that some of those kids are accumulating that are not on free reduced lunch. And, and so we just continue to have some discussion, and so I wanted Beth to come in and, and share some ideas that we've come up with, and we can spend some time talking about that as well, so yeah, that's my best.
Thank you.
I just heard you say you like handouts.
I love handouts. I just, other people give me things.
You say this on a panel.
I can't read. I can't read.
You can't read? Thank you, ma'am.
Will you tell us what it's on?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, yeah, this is just takeaway messages for you, I said, um, that anyone who came through allowing you to come stay with you this afternoon. So really, just kind of put things in, questions and answers, because you, you get called from your constituents and when things happen, I thought this might help to give you some, um, some groundwork as to why we do what we do. Mainly, we're focusing on the school lunch debt, and, um, it's nothing new, we've had school lunch debts since the beginning of time. It just heightened after the pandemic. If you recall, March of twenty-twenty, schools shut down, we came back that next school year and the government allowed all children to eat at no cost. And then come the next year, we started out for the very first month, everybody pays again, and then September ninth, they said, hey, never mind, let's go ahead and let everybody eat at no cost again. So we had two years of that back-to-back, and people got out of the habit of filling out applications. Honestly, a lot of them kind of, it was off their radar that they had to pay for meals because they haven't done it for a couple of years.
We got spoiled.
We got spoiled, so, um, and then when they did start applying for, um, free reduced benefits in twenty-two, twenty-three, a lot of them were denied that had been reduced before because, say, um, wages went up for a lot of people after the pandemic. Unfortunately, the free reduced application is based on gross wages, and even though wages went up, the cost for everything that we do went up as well, so their net income really didn't grow. So a lot of people were cut off because of that. So last year, our numbers were pretty low for free reduced. This year, of course, we have the direct certification with Medicaid, and so we're sitting at, we're at sixty-two point three percent free reduced. That's definitely the highest this district's ever been, to my knowledge, in the last twenty years at least. And that sixty-two percent, um, forty percent of that is direct certified. So it's truly coming from people that we received information from, um, Department of Health Services for, you know, food stamps and also Medicaid free reduced, so those were our numbers that we're working with now. So when you think about that, the contrast is, there's only thirty-seven percent of our four thousand and forty-five students that have to pay full price for meals right now. So it's also interesting that with that few number of kids that have to pay, that our charges are high, so high. And I told Dr. Thomas, a lot of our charges stem from maybe a couple hundred students carry the, the majority of the charges, so. So last month, we won't talk about what happened, but some good things came out of that, um, some parents came through and, um, paid some monies. And, uh, we had some very generous donations, and, um, I'll direct you to item number, where am I? Number five, what's our current total amount of charges? Through all the donations and everything we received, as of today, um, we're sitting on only about sixty-two hundred dollars in charges right now.
Wow.
Which is nothing.
How much?
Six thousand two hundred, it's on there, it's under, um, item number five.
Okay.
That, and again, that's a moving target, so just so you know that. Um, and again, we, we had two donors come forward and pay off charges, all the charges at two schools. And that's great, everybody got zeroed out, but then the next meal service, we had another fifty dollars in charges. So it is a moving target, and, um, so that's never gonna change. But in light of all of this, we've continued to let kids keep getting the meals of their choice, and we will continue to keep doing that, so I just want you to know that. Had a little change of heart, I don't want to do something other than, you know, letting the kids get the, the meal of their choice. So in order to help us maybe to cut back on the charges, this is where some ideas that we have, I wanted to see if you all will support us. But if you go to, um, let's see, go right out here. Number six, some items for, or some ideas for how we can reduce charges. You know, could we establish something at the district level to, or maybe withhold privileges for certain events if they owe any money to the school, including lunch charges? For example, um, right now, students are, um, able to exempt from the final if they meet, um, certain criteria. And owing money to the school, not just food services, has been one of the criteria. So this year, we were able to get them to add also lunch charges, and, um, so we're doing that. Beginning of the year, we worked with the high school again, um, that if kids were trying to buy a parking pass, they need to make sure they didn't owe any money to the school, including lunch charges. So I wanted to see if you are good with some of those type of things. Other districts have done these kind of methods, um, maybe districts will do collection agencies, they'll do, um, go to court, talk Amy. That's just not what we want to do, it's, it's expense, and there's no guarantee here we're gonna recover any of the funds anyway. So, um, I don't think we're to that point, and I don't want to go there. But if we can just kind of have some sort of leverage to get these parents, because again, at the end of the day, it is the parent's responsibility. And we just need to find ways to have an incentive for them, if they're, if they're not gonna send lunch with their child or make sure their child eats breakfast at home, will they at least go ahead and provide some money, or there needs to be some sort of incentive? So that's really what we're trying to accomplish. So, and then we thought, could we even expand that in junior high? The principals at the junior high and, and middle school have both told me, you know, there might be an opportunity, like when there's a special dance or something, that, you know, hey, in order to be able to go, you gotta make sure, you know, nothing's expired, you know, all your fines are paid, you know, whatever the case may be. So again, it's just another thing, um, because again, it usually costs to go to those dances, so if you have money to go to that, then maybe you need to make sure you pay your other bill first, it's just something. And as far as the students that have the charges, obviously, we're dissecting on that. You know, at the beginning of the year, we sent out the free reduced application, it's online, we also make it available, um, printed copy that you can download. And we only had nine hundred and forty-eight households apply for sending in applications. Of those nine hundred and forty-eight, um, there was only, what do I have on here, I've got it over here somewhere. Not that many that were denied, okay, there were, hang on, bear a second.
Six, thirty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty-eight were denied.
One more, question number nine. So we did seven hundred and forty-eight applications, sixty-eight were denied due to income level, and that represented ninety-eight students that the families tried to apply, weren't able to get assistance. And of those ninety-eight students, um, twenty-two of them currently have charges. So seventy-six of them don't owe any charges, and they applied for paying for their meals, but, um, but carrying charges. Um, and also, you should know that, again, we've had a lot of people that, maybe the first three months of the year, they were buying lunch, breakfast every day, never brought money, finally got them to apply. Lo and behold, they're eligible for benefits. Those charges, we, I don't go, I mean, I don't keep, you know, going after people that they're charged as long as they're free and reduced. We use our donations to go ahead and, and, you know, pay off all those. And we're at a point now, we've collected enough money from our donations, because everything that happened in November, that we can, um, wipe out all the charges for all of the free reduced, uh, kids right now, so we feel pretty good about that.
I wonder if there couldn't be a mechanism worked in where the Department of Agriculture clears those for us?
No, um, in order for the, the charges to stay on their account, as long as they're in the district, and I put an explanation in there, um, under number three, talks about the difference between delinquent debt and bad debt. Delinquent debt is what we have with, uh, kids that are currently in the district, they just keep eating, they're here, they're active, but they're not paying. Um, and then bad debt is if they are no longer in the school district, and if that's funny, it's hard for us to collect for them. And I can't carry bad debt as part of the, um, school nutrition program. So twice, general fund has had to come in and, um, clear out that debt for us. And we did it last year, it was around twelve hundred dollars or something like that, two thousand dollars. What's, what's a two there? Anyway, so it wasn't, wasn't a lot of money, so. But that's, that's what we try to do. And so we try to, we try to keep focusing on collecting charges daily. I mean, we're sending out emails, we're doing phone calls, we're doing text messages with their cell phone. Elementary, they might be sending letters home through the teacher's mailbox, and it goes home in a bookbag. But even with all the attempts that we do, we're not perfect. I mean, I had a parent today that sent me an email this morning, and she's like, "How is that? I did not know about this charge. I thought my son's charge was paid off. He told me he owed $90 in, in October, and he said he took care of it." Well, he didn't take care of it, she misunderstood, and so she gets the notice today, and it's $70. And she's like, "How come I don't know this?" And I said, and she gave me her cell number, I said, "That's the cell number, we had a call went to you last Friday at 2:00. I didn't get it. Well, here's the email we have." "Well, that's not my email." So we're only as good as the information that we have. So I'm not, I'm not, not, you know, trying to lie or anything like that, but when she called me, I was so glad that she did because it made me realize that we're, with all that we're doing, we're not gonna be able to catch everybody. And so it really, and she got right on my games plus and put $200, just like that, because there'd be guilt. She was like, "I wish I didn't know, and I feel a little bit bad." So I think there are some folks out there that have good intentions, they just don't know. Even though they're high school students, no, they don't always own the information.
You mean, teenagers?
Just saying.
Don't, just show you.
You're familiar with parents? So, but that's what we're trying to do. But the good news for all of us is that, you know, we're not gonna pursue anything different at this time. We're gonna continue on with feeding the kids. We will encourage parents, if they're not paying, to maybe feed their kids at breakfast at home. Because honestly, you have an opportunity to get breakfast before you come to school, but at lunch, you're pretty much landlocked, because thankfully, we don't have open campuses, so you can't leave. And so, you know, that would be one way to stop it. The other thing I should remind you this year, the reduced students are not paying anything for their meals either this year. Because we have a grant that we're getting from the state, that's covering their 30 cents for breakfast and 40 cents for lunch. But that will end, and so they'll be back to paying next year. So, but I'm looking at some other things within my budget as well, and I'll, I'll talk with Dr. Thomas about that later. There are other federal programs out there, but even with 60% free reduced, we're only 40% direct certified. And a lot of the best programs, you need to be at least 60% direct certified before it makes sense. So we're, I don't wanna waste your time with that, so. But if you have questions, or if you hear about something and wanna know more, be glad to talk to you. Yes?
Beth, just remind me, I know we looked at this, we went through this, but typically, the charges, the bad debt is more at the high school and junior high than the elementarys. How does it break down across the schools, as far as?
Well, I mean, we started out the year, it was zero bad debt, because it was cleared out.
I'm sorry, just the accumulation, is it a worse problem at the junior high and high school than the elementary schools?
The volume is higher at the junior high and high school, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Then today, we have somebody that wants to pay all the charges off at Hill City. See, I may tell you, the kids just keep coming, but, and they wanna pay just the full paid students because I'm taking care of the free reduced, and that's only about $800. They'll take that away, but they'll let their kids at Hill City.
My other question, you, you do a phenomenal job. I mean, I can't imagine bird dogging all this, so thank you for that. I mean, it seems like it's, I mean, I know we're not getting 100%, but it's getting, it's getting down there. So how much time do you actually spend having to do this?
Lots.
That's what...
I mean, it's not just me, it's my manager.
No, 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 I know, I know.
They're putting in eight, nine hours, and then they're calling another hour. I usually call between 5:00 and 7:00 every night, is when I try to reach parents. Because they don't respond to my emails and, or my texts, so I try to call, I call them at work, I do whatever I can, but... But yeah, it is, it's, it's time-consuming. And, and we get some people that say, "Well, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna buy it." I'm like, "Well, then, can you send some food with them, take care of your child," you know, kind of thing, so.
What percentage just comes out and tells you straight up, we're not paying? Would you say?
Oh, not a very high, maybe 5%.
5%.
And then someone will say, "How did you let it get that high?" And I'm like, "Excuse me." You know, so, and I'm like, "Does your child not tell you?" "No, she never mentioned a word," so. But anyway, there's all different, there's all different things, scenarios going on. And also, at the elementary level, you know, obviously, there are other things that we can incentivize for the parents to make sure the kids have money. But when there's issues there, I feel like we can also reach out to, you know, the counselors, administrators, and possibly even social workers, if there's suspicion of a neglect or something along those cases. So i- if that's okay, I would just like to kind of like utilize the resources that we have, keep feeding them, because like I said, most people that can pay are paying. It's just a handful that are making it a little difficult. And it's just not worth it to change something that is just a low percentage. Yes?
So, obviously, that got out, everybody knew about it, and it, people freaked out. I actually had some school teacher, a couple of them from Cherokee County come to me and say, "Well, when we have this issue, we actually hand walk them down and make them get a cheese sandwich." So what you're, what you did, I mean...
It was just misunderstood.
Yeah.
Again, for sure. At no time were, were anybody who was surely needed ever gonna be compromised about their meals. So again, it just, it wasn't communicated, and I'll take responsibility for that. It was a little too transparent, but not explaining everything. And there were some parents that called me and said, "I, I think that's great. If they can't pay, then I'd be fine if you give my, my son a cheese sandwich."
Yep. That's an order, really?
Yeah. And some districts do that, and they make them pay for it. I was gonna do it and give the cost, so, you know, it's, it's all been there. Anyway.
At some point, I, I just feel, I don't wanna punish the kids for something that's probably not the kids doing.
Agreed.
You know, a 12-year-old's not gonna really have access to money enough to cover their meal charges, and parents will, and when you, you know, really punish a child by restricting them from activities and something, that's not hitting where we need to hit. But is it cost-effective enough when these charges get out of hand, that at the end of the school year, we go to the magistrate and try to get the money? Is it worth that much trouble to do it? Because punishing the kids, to me, is not where, where we need to go with that.
I want us to welcome to bring it up, because, I mean, there's several districts that do this, and there's some that say it's just not right, because it's not the child's fault. And, and I totally get it, we don't wanna punish anybody, but, but to go to magistrate court, I mean, it's gonna cost $100.
There's a fee, you have to get on the docket, it has to be, there, I mean, there's a process. So the work they're doing now, when it comes to the ones that you take to magistrate, and it is appearing in person, in magistrate too, so whoever the rep is would have to go. It is quite time-consuming. In the past, I mean, the collection efforts have kind of paid off, and when we haven't had such issues.
So what you're saying, going to that much trouble with the doc fee and, doc, document fee and everything, that the, the medicine might be more severe than the disease in the, in the end?
At this time, based on what we talked about, I, I don't think we're quite ready to do that. But if it continues to grow, if it gets back to the level some of them are...
I mean, last year, we were at 40,000, if you remember, in charges. And we got about half of that before the end of the year, and then we got the inactives cleared. So some of the debt that we had, you know, a month ago, was stuff that carried over from last year as well, so. So there's always going to be, you know, and that's why, we have to have a policy, because USDA says if you're gonna pay students, get a meal and charge and not pay, then you have to have a policy. So we have to have something. And so right now, it is, we do have a charge of $12, and again, it's just our way of trying to remind and encourage, and, you know, low-balance reminders and things of that nature. But again, at the end of the day, nobody's gonna be denied a meal. They come through the line, they can get a meal. And so we will, that's, I guess the message that I need to make sure everybody has loud and clear, so that's what we will do. We will keep working on our charges, and I think it's just more and more communicating with those families that just are reluctant to pay. And again, we're able to look up and see where they live, and according to that address, they should be able to pay their bills. But if they won't answer a phone call or anything, then it's, it's really hard for us to do anything about it, so.
Beth, did you just think we're mandated to have a policy?
Yes.
You're mandated that?
USDA, federal, because I'm a federal program.
Has to be some sort of policy in place.
Yes, and it doesn't have to actually be a board of peers, but it just has to be a procedure. We just call it a policy, and so we put it in place in 2016, and then revised it in 18, and then in 20, and then last year. So every year, we'll look at it, so I'm gonna revise it yet again, and clear out all the misconfusion from last year, so.
So just a point, I, I mean, I appreciate the fact it's a tricky thing to punish the kids, but particularly, when you're dealing with older kids, elementary kids, I get this, but denying them certain privileges to get their parents' attention, I, I don't have a problem with. I had to deal with this in the business that I work in. Although you're always engaging with kids, sometimes you have to get the parents' attention. And a lot of times, parents respond to that. They, "Oh, I didn't know," I get it. With elementary-age kid, I, I would struggle a little bit more than that, but junior high, high school, absolutely, those kids are responsible enough, they know they can communicate that with their parents and deal with the issue. So, I mean, I'm, I would be, because we're talking about people we know that should pay and aren't paying. We're not talking about people that can't pay by margin. We're trying to collect for people that can pay.
Right.
I agree with Tommy. Yeah, I wouldn't wanna have the same procedure for elementary students.
Absolutely.
But we're trying to teach middle schoolers and high schoolers responsibility anyway, and they wouldn't have a problem notifying their parents if they needed money to go to a dance.
That's right.
So they can notify their parents if they need lunch money, just the way it is.
Well, I mean, lunch is one of those things on the top of the hierarchy that everybody needs to have. It's not like going to dance, I get it, it's not like buying the $90 yearbook. Yeah, a lot of them are buying that as well, but I just, you know, just need to know their support district-wide, if we're all consistent about how we look at certain things.
I think it's a good idea.
I do think Mr. Collins wanted people, or, I don't know, it wasn't a policy, but I think before students got parking spaces, they had to come current.
Right.
And interestingly, they did.
Exactly.
So.
And they're doing it right now with the exemptions, with the exams. So we have, basically have a little sheet of every student that teachers recommend, and the manager of high school is checking their account, and just saying, yes, 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 what they owe some, here's what they owe, all they do is pay, like, it's still good except to, to not tell where I find them. So, we're gonna try. It's not very many kids, there was probably only 15 kids on there that owed charges out of...
Well, kudos to you, I mean, you, you guys have done a phenomenal job managing all this, really.
You did a great job, though. All right, well, thank you, and I'm sorry I called everybody so much grief around Thanksgiving.
We'll be okay.
Hope you have a nice Thanksgiving.
Next time, let's just grill the cheese sandwich, because that would, and put a pickle.
Well, that picture made it look way better than it was.
Yes.
I was tempted to two pieces of bread and a slice of cheese and...
Thank you, ma'am.
In Cherokee County, their, their alternate meal is a vegetable plate, so back in the day when my kids were there. They, they paid because the kids definitely liked the vegetables.
Ms. Thompson, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep them fresh and proud. Beans and greens.
Our last thing on the agenda is just a preview of our consent agenda for Thursday night. We do have financial boards that will be looking at, we've already discussed the school calendars for the next two years, and so that'll be on the consent agenda. And then we'll keep the, schedule for the board meetings on the consent agenda, and then take off the work sessions, okay? And then there are two MOUs I wanna share with you. One is for the University of Tennessee's College of Education, where they have an MOU with us, because there is, I think, a local student who will possibly be student teaching in our, in our district. So I think that's, that's why we have the University of Tennessee's MOU. The other is with our sheriff's office, and I want to, this is really actually very exciting. We recently started a criminal justice pathway at the high school. And, and so this year, we got a first block and second block classes. Next year, we'll offer a third block class that allows those students to complete the pathway. But as part of the third class, the sheriff's office will actually come in and have our students credentialed, if they desire, to become a jaminer right after graduation. So for students who have no plan, that's an option for them. So they'll come in and work with Coach Shaw and get this done, but that's also a, a part of our MOU. And that goes back with our theme of having our graduates enrolled in this to employ. So that's a great opportunity for our students who have no, have no plan. And then also, we'll have approval of minutes from our previous meetings, and a surplus approval. We'll also approve eight buses that were surplus, that's on the consent agenda. So that's all I have for our agenda, this stuff.
Any questions? Larry and Mary, you're, you're off the hook, we're gonna go to executive session next, this part. At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gibson? Is there any discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. We are adjourned to executive session at, I don't know, say, 4:00?